Councilmember Hall, it looks like we've got everybody here in just a couple minutes remaining. And Tim is with us tonight to handle the recordings. You can give him the heads up when you're ready.
Thanks, Tim.
And Councilmember Goodman, can I check your audio real quick?
Yes, you may.
All right, sounding good. Thank you.
All right, Tim, it looks like it's 6:30 and we're all here. So are you ready for a 10-second countdown? All right, perfect. 10 seconds, starting now. Welcome, everyone. I'm Councilmember Zach Hall, and I'd like to call the April 26th Special City Council Study Session to Order. Just a couple introductory remarks before we begin. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting, one being a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make your public comments after the presentation and City Council question and answer period on tonight's two agenda items. Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. All right, I will now take a quick roll call. The councilmembers in attendance, please say here when I call on your name. And let's start with Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Perfect. Thank you all. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comment. So if there's anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments at this time, sorry if you're hearing screaming kids in the background. My window's open, and I'll close that in a minute. If there's anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. There are a couple ways to go about doing that. If you're on the phone, you can press *3, and if you've joined by computer or your smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. This varies by device, and one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I will wait just a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. All right, Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening at this time?
No, no one's signed up to speak, and I don't see that anyone has raised their hand at this time either.
All right, great. And just a reminder to anyone listening in, we'll have additional opportunities for comment after each of the agenda items on today's agenda. So and as a second reminder, written comments can always be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isakwa.gov. And next, I will go to Council President Hunt to summarize any email comments we may have received on this, on these items.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Council President Hunt, and I've been summarizing email comments that we received specifically on items that we're discussing at council during our virtual meetings. And I reviewed our emails. We, we do have public comment and other forms that will be summarized during the, during the A B later this evening. But specifically to, to Isakwa City Council, specifically on this agenda bill, we received one email which was shared to us by City Administrator Bob Kowits, which was from Eastside Fire and Rescue. They requested American Recovery Act funding because they are not eligible to directly receive these funds. And they explained their expenses over the last year with COVID-19 and that, and also that they were not able to be reimbursed and are not eligible for getting the funds directly themselves. And that concludes comment that was received directly on this topic.
All right, thank you very much, Council President. With that, we'll close public comment and move into the next item on our agenda, which is ID 0887, Federal COVID-19 Relief Funding, presented by our very own City Administrator Wally Bockwitz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall members of the council. Good evening. An unusual occurrence to be able to come and report to you that we expect to get a lot of money from the federal government to help with relief from the COVID-19 pandemic. You have followed the issues with the Congress over the last year. The CARES Act was adopted last year. No direct funding for cities, however, the state of Washington did choose to provide funding to municipal governments. And then on March the 11th, President Biden assigned the American Recovery Act, which provides funding for all local governments in America. And we believe our allocation of that is about $8.6 million. So my purpose here this evening is to talk a little bit about the act, talk a little bit about the funding that we're going to receive, talk a little bit about Mayor Polly's vision for how this money can be, could be, should be spent, and to get your feedback really at a 30,000-foot level. There are no decisions. We're not looking for specific funding opportunities, but really to talk about guiding principles and then to talk about also a timeframe to come back to the council and continue the discussion. And Councilmember Hall, can you see that all right?
Everything looks good to me.
Great, thank you. So I mentioned to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan, talk a little bit about the state and local fiscal recovery piece of that. Other key funding in the American Rescue Plan Act. Again, I think it's important to indicate that all $350 billion is allocated to state and local government. There's lots of other dollars in the plan that can be some support to our residents. Then we'll talk a little bit about the investments that the city of Isakwa has made to date in pandemic relief, talk a little bit about moving forward regarding guiding principles, and then share some of the feedback that Mayor Polly received at the April 6th Recovery Task Course Meeting, and then get your feedback and answer any questions that you have. So I'm talking with Mayor Polly about this, again, an extraordinary opportunity, not only for Isakwa, but for cities, counties, and towns, and communities all over America. You know, she looks at this really under a banner of three ideas: recover, rebuild, and reimagine. That the opportunities before us certainly allow us to recover any losses, any damage done to the economy, damage done to, you know, community members, community businesses, but also to look at how we rebuild from that, and then most importantly, how we reimagine. This is a unique opportunity with $8.6 million to see are there opportunities to use this money to help reimagine the Isakwa that is and will be to come. And that mayor will be a different Isakwa than we would have seen just a year, year and a half ago with the beginning of the pandemic. So recovery, rebuild, reimagine are really three of the key themes that I think Mayor Polly is not only challenging the council, but also challenging the community to think about as we look at this funding that we're receiving. So to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act that was signed into law on March 11th. $1.9 trillion of aid provided really across the spectrum. The slide talks in some specific detail about some of the support that has been given. I think what's important to this discussion, at least most immediately, is the $350 billion that has been made available specific for state and local governments, the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. Broken up at this very way, $195.3 billion to the states, to Columbia, $65.1 billion to counties, and then $65.1 billion to local governments, municipalities. And again, we have not seen a check. We have not gotten an official notification from the federal government. But in the information we have received from the National Local Government Associations, the line on the spreadsheet says $8.6 million from the city of Isakwa. This is largely based on per capita, but my understanding is not entirely based on per capita. So as you look at other communities around us, you know, you can, can take our population, divide by that $8.6 million, and you get a fairer sense of the amount of money that other communities around us are, here in the Seattle area, as well as around the country are receiving. So the timing, according to the statute, is that the first portion of this money goes directly known as entitled communities, not later, that's 60 days after enactment, or May the 11th, and then a second payment no earlier than 12 months after the first payment. When it talks about entitlement versus non-entitlement communities, this is based on the Community Development Block Grant system. And so those communities that receive CDBG funds are referred to as an entitlement community for the purposes of this act. And then those that do not are referred to as non-entitlements. So since we do not, in Isakwa, receive CDBG money directly from the federal government, we receive an opportunity to access that money through King County. We are a non-entitlement community, and so we'll be receiving our funds from the state of Washington. And so there's an additional 30 days after May the 11th that states have to distribute that first portion of funds to non-entitlement community. There's also a potential for states to request an extension. So we would, I guess, not expect to see any dollars from this act until at least 30 days. I would imagine past that, so mid-June, and maybe even longer than that. All these recovery funds that are-
City Administrator, City Administrator Bob Kowits, this is, this is Tisha. I'm noticing your audio is a little garbled, and I just wanted to check and see if anyone else is having that experience. Yes, I see nodding heads. So I think it may be impacted by your sharing your screen and extra bandwidth that takes. So why don't I go ahead and pick up the slideshow on my end?
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me out better? I think maybe the microphone was not in the proper position. Is this any better?
It's not really. It sounds very much like a internet garble, lack of connection issue.
All right, well, then I will take this down. I come to City Hall to do this for the precise reason of having better internet, and it didn't work tonight, so I apologize.
Give me just a minute here.
Okay, so I can't, I can't not comment that we look like the Brady Bunch in that screen.
Beg your pardon?
Well, before Tisha put up the, your presentation on her screen, we were, we were in a configuration like the Brady Bunch.
Oh. Right, so can you hear me better now, Councilmember?
Unfortunately not. This is Councilmember Hall, unfortunately not. But maybe we should just continue on, and if it gets to the point where it's, I could still recognize what you were saying, and I hope other councilmembers could too. If not, feel free to chime it in the chat, but feel free to carry on. And if it gets to the point where we can't understand, I'll be sure to jump in.
All right, well, I apologize. I'm not quite sure what the issues are, but I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. Again, the recovery funds must remain available until December 31st, 2024, so there's no urgency in spending the money we have until 2024 to do that. Next slide. So the eligible uses for the recovery funding, there are some very specific things that are outlined. The first is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. So the direct funding that we have been providing to small businesses, for example, that will, those sort of things would be included as we move forward. Also, aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality, again, things that we have already done in the past. The next is to respond to workers performing essential work during the public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. There is a little bit of clarity still required as to exactly what this means, and both the National League of Cities and the United States Conference of Mayors asked the Treasury Department for some additional understanding of that language. Next is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the public health emergency. And we'll talk a little bit about what our estimates are under the act that we believe has been a reduction in revenue. And then finally, to make necessary investments in three specific types of infrastructure: water, sewer, and broadband. Next slide. There are a couple of things that it specifically cannot be used for, and that is to offset a reduction in net tax revenue resulting in a change of law regulation or administrative interpretation, none of which I believe applies to us, and also cannot be deposited into any pension fund. And again, restriction that I don't believe would apply to us. Next slide. The justifiable uses for the recovery funds. If you miss the fiscal hole and fill it with recovery funds, then funding could become unrestricted and able to be used for any local government cost or purpose. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about what we think is the lost revenue number, and that money, if the council so chose, could be used in any way the council sees fit. Local governments can use the funding for its own needs, but can clearly also provide money to community nonprofits, businesses, and organizations. And again, we've already talked about the infrastructure. Next slide. Again, what does it mean to respond to negative economic impacts? We're waiting for the Treasury Department to give us more information, but as the National Local Government Associations have looked at this, they are recommending that any economic impact test would be some documented way it was a project program or organization harmed revenue-wise or otherwise by the economic slowdown. And certainly, as we look at revenue lost, I think we have that pretty well covered. Next slide. In addition to the funds that the cities are receiving, states again are receiving money, and so there's opportunities for the states, once again, as they do with the CARES Act, to share those dollars. The state of Washington has, has made no progress yet on this subject, but again, there may be an opportunity for the state to share additional dollars to us. I believe the state of Washington also has CARES Act money that's not been allocated, so that again also remains an option. And then the third point here is that localities may transfer some of our funds to other units of local government, including states. So if there's an opportunity for us to partner with King County, with the state of Washington, with neighboring communities, with other units of local government like Eastside Fire and Rescue, that would also be allowable under the act. Next slide. So when we look at revenue losses pursuant to the act, Finance Director Beth Goldberg has done some analysis. And so the next couple of slides are her best analysis with revenue received through fiscal 19 versus revenue that was actually received in fiscal 2020. Next slide. So this first slide is an all-fund slide, the first line regarding the general fund, and we'll talk more about that. But we estimate that the loss in revenue between 19 and 20 for the general fund was about $1.8 million. Then there are some specific funds that also were impacted. Next is the Municipal Arts Fund, which receives funding through the admissions tax at the movie theater, and they saw a loss of about $257,000 of the lion's share of the funding that they would have received during the course of 2020. Next is the Lodging Tax Fund, the tax associated with hotel room nights. Here in Isakwa, again, a large reduction between 19 and 20, so about $170,000. And then the Street Operating Fund for the motor vehicle fuel tax, again, in this case, a little bit more modest reduction, $110,000. And then our utility funds, as you know, that we've not been able to assess penalties or collect past due bills as per our normal circumstances. And we estimate at this point the lost revenue to our utility funds because of that's about $456,000. So you take that all together, all funds, that's about $2.8 million. Next slide. This details more specifically the general fund revenue loss of about $1.8 million. You can read this for yourself, I think, looking at the, the largest differences, our recreation classes, rents and leases, and a collection of other general fund revenue losses. Again, that's how we decimate the $1.8 million. So this is 2019 versus 2020. As the National Local Government Associations are looking at this, the question has a raised, what about continuing lost revenue in fiscal '21 and beyond? And so there may be an opportunity to look at those $2019 against what we actually receive in 2021, 2022, 2023. That at this point is still speculation, but we believe that there's likely, if there's additional ongoing revenue loss, that that would be available for use. And Councilmember Hall, I believe there's a question. Would you like me to stop, or would you like to wait till the end?
Yeah, since this is the last slide with these tables, we might as well just take a quick break. And Councilmember Walsh, feel free to answer your question or ask your question.
I would love to answer my own question. Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So City Administrator Bob Kowits, in areas, as an example, the recreation classes, while the revenue went down, obviously because we couldn't hold the classes, we also had lower expenses because we didn't have to hold to those classes. Is there any consideration for that when looking at this as revenue loss?
You know, at this point, with the information that we have, we believe this is an acceptable look at revenue, that there currently is no language regarding offsetting expense reductions. So again, I think, as I've mentioned at the top of the presentation, all of us are waiting for additional guidance from the Treasury Department to see if there will be regulations that will clarify this any further. So again, the desire for the council was to get sort of some ground floor understanding, and so this is our best as we know it, and it will be adjusted as we get additional guidance, either from the federal government or from the state of Washington.
Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Hall, sir, I don't see anything else.
I'm not seeing any other questions either. Feel free to go ahead and sit here.
Thank you. Next slide, please. In addition to the direct funding that cities are receiving, there are other tranches of money for transportation, small business support, housing assistance, food security, and public health. And I just want to touch on those. These are funds that we will not receive directly, but that our residents will have the ability to receive, and there may be opportunities for grant opportunities for the city through either the state government or the federal government in the future. Next slide. Transportation and infrastructure, this slide talks a little bit about that. Capital project money in addition to any infrastructure bills that the Congress will be looking at, funds for transit, funds for airports, funds for EPA, and FEMA disaster relief. Again, there may be opportunities for the city to apply for these separately, but right now, those, those dollars are contained at the federal level. Next slide. Small business and nonprofit support, certainly we have been very involved in providing small business support. As you can see from this slide, there is a variety of national initiatives geared towards small businesses, towards specific types of businesses such as the shuttered operator venue grants. I think that is for theaters and sporting venues, money for restaurant revitalization, National Endowment of the Arts, National Endowment of Communities, museum and libraries. So a lot of different pots of money that are out there for individual businesses and governments to apply for in addition. Next slide. I want to talk a little bit in this next series of slides about the investments that the city has already made to date to deal with the pandemic. And again, the council's very familiar with this, but for the public's benefit, we wanted to just cover briefly what those investments today have been. Next slide. As the council knows, right off the bat, you know, 13 months ago today, the council started with $100,000 of rental housing assistance from the general fund. Then there was the first tranche of CARES Act money from the state of Washington, $1.1 million in June. There was an additional amount from King County specifically for business assistance. There was the second allocation of state CARES Act money in September, which was about $563,000. The city council, during the budget process last fall, allocated an additional $500,000 for direct business assistance using last year's fund balance. Next slide. The city allocated $25,000 to the Village Theater from the arts fund. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has made $50,000 worth of grants in the fall and has just concluded another round of about $50,000 of grants, and that was from fund balance in the Lodging Tax Advisory Fund. In the 2021 budget, there's $55,000 for landlord tenant mediation, $45,000 for emergency housing assistance, which was made available in February of this year, another $250,000 to small business grants, which was made available by the council in February of this year. Mayor Polly's $45,000 of Fit and Fun Outdoors Initiative, that was also from February of this year. Next slide. The streetery, a lot of energy and resources from the city went into making the streetery a success last year. The city, at staff time, the city provided barricades and other fiscal equipment that was needed. The Isakwa Loyal Bi-Local Campaign was something that the city did. And then finally, in more recent months, Mayor Polly created the Isakwa Vaccine Community Partnership, and that through our partnership with Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. The city of Sammamish, Eastside Fire and Rescue, has led to mobile vaccinations and the mass vaccination site at Lake Sammamish State Park. Only, the city of Seattle is the only other city in King County that has had a community effort, city-based community effort for vaccinations, so we're very proud of that. The city council agreed to a three-party agreement a few months ago between the city of Sammamish, the city of Isakwa, and Eastside Fire and Rescue, front dollars associated with the mass vaccinations and mobile vaccinations. So we expect that FEMA reimbursement is very likely for those costs, but if for some reason that would not be the case, we would, I think, look to the city council to spend some of the $8.6 million to reimburse us for the costs associated with the mobile vaccinations and the mass vaccination site. Next slide. So the guiding principles. Mayor Polly, and discussions with her, as she has talked with mayors, not only in the region but around the country, I think everyone, all of the mayors around America are looking at this as a tremendous opportunity for change in the community. And Mayor Polly's desire for this evening to get feedback from the council, but as we move forward with the actual spending of the money, is to look for specific guiding principles for how the money should be spent. Next slide. Really, first and foremost, the underpinnings of any kind of guiding principles really would be the strategic plan. You're well aware of the community process that led to the strategic plan being adopted in May of 2019. Next slide. The vision, mission, guiding principles, goals of the strategic plan really fit nicely, I think, when looking about guiding principles of how to spend $8.6 million in federal dollars. Next slide. The guiding principles of the strategic plan, to remind you, are people, the environment, community prosperity, service excellence, and equity. So as we look at guiding principles for the spending of these dollars, I think this is certainly a good start. Next slide. The goals of the strategic plan: mobility, growth and development, environmental stewardship, social and economic fatality, city leadership and services and infrastructure. You know, if investments are going to be- if investments are going to be made of these one-time dollars, certainly investment in projects associated with these goals, the strategic plan makes sense. Next slide. When we look at other areas of support, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, a few areas specifically are called out as far as negative economic impacts. So it's looking at guiding principles, you know, how much should be invested in supporting individuals in our community? How much should be invested in supporting small businesses? What's the role of travel and tourism? Certainly, our hotels, specifically here in Isqal, have been devastated by the pandemic. Are there opportunities, should there be opportunities, looking specifically at the travel and tourism industry here in Isqal? Workers performing essential work, another category of allowable expenditures. Would it make sense for us to look to our partners and provide some support? Certainly, Eastside Fire and Rescue, as you know, they have already made a request for support, and the investments that they have made have been truly outstanding, not only when the pandemic first hit, but in more recent months, their leadership with our mass vaccination and mobile vaccination effort. Swedish Hospital, again, another organization under the law the city could provide funding to, really was there on the front lines for this community throughout the pandemic and continues to be there. Sammamish Plateau Water Agency is another local government that serves our community. They are not eligible for any direct federal support from the pandemic, and so would it be, make sense to look at investments there? We've talked a little bit about water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. I think water and sewer is pretty straightforward. We have a capital plan that has a variety of projects for water and sewer. Could these dollars be used to leverage faster work on these projects? Could these dollars be used to free up money for other projects if we were to substitute them with the Recovery Act dollars? And then there's the issue of broadband. Not a big topic, certainly in my time here. I know frustration with current incumbent carriers, but the idea of, you know, would it make sense for the city to make investments in broadband? You know, my sense of this is that to start with broadband infrastructure from zero is a pretty tall order, and when we look at the other needs in the community and how this money might be spent, perhaps a focus more specific than water and sewer makes sense. And then finally, it's leveraging these funds, because not only did Isqal get a lot of money, so did all the jurisdictions around us. And so does it make sense, as part of a guiding principle, to pause and to talk with our partners to see, are there ways that we can leverage funding from multiple agencies to make a real difference in our community, be it King County, the city of Sammamish, other jurisdictions, the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe, that we should pause and reflect and see, are there opportunities there to make bigger, more regional improvements by leveraging funding with some of our neighbors? Next slide.
And real quickly, this is Councilmember Hall, before we move on to this final section. Councilmember DeMichele, I see you have some questions. Did you want to ask those before we hear this final section or afterwards?
If it's okay to ask them now, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, so my first question is that I know that the legislative session just got done yesterday, and I'm not expecting a deep analysis, but I'm reading legislative report after legislative report, they're all saying this was a historic legislative session. Eastside Human Services Forum lists, you know, huge amounts of money that are going to be invested in housing and rental assistance and legal assistance to people, and I'm just, I'm struggling with how we come up with general principles when the question of how much are we going to invest in people, if the state is going to be investing a huge amount of money into housing and other social services, it's kind of difficult to know just exactly what emphasis to put on these items without knowing the impact of this, of this quote-unquote "historic" legislative session. So, any thoughts about that?
Well, and I absolutely agree, Councilmember DeMichele. You know, I think one of the challenges before the council and before our community is timing. You know, what needs are extraordinarily urgent and should be addressed now, and what needs perhaps do we need to take some time to reflect, you know, understand what's happened in Olympia, understand what our neighbors are going to do, see what the interest of our neighbors might be in collaboration. I think those are all questions. There is an urgency in that this is a lot of money, and if there's an immediate need, then I think it makes sense to try to identify those immediate needs. If we think that there's an opportunity over the next few years to be more reflective on this and make sure that those investments are spent as strategically as possible, you know, then perhaps we wait. Perhaps we let the spring and summer pass and then revisit this at a later time so we have a better sense of this. There's the infrastructure initiatives in the state legislature that did not move forward. You know, certainly there's speculation that there might be a special session. How does that happen? What is the state of Washington to do with that? But no discussion of that, and how might they allocate some of this money for some specific initiative? So I think, again, tonight is really meant to be the first discussion. I think there was a desire by the council to get some general information out to the community and have an initial discussion, but, you know, I think it's really a matter, and I'm stealing a little bit of Councilmember Walsh's thunder, because we had a very thoughtful conversation about this earlier, and I want to give her the credit for the thought, that, you know, that maybe this is a segmented discussion, and we look at things that are perhaps most critical and immediate for the community now, and then make an allocation or two, but then really take our time to process all the rest.
Okay, thank you very much. And I did, on the broadband issue, we heard from the Recovery Task Force and over and over again that we really need this increase in broadband, but I have just a very basic question, is it even legal for a city, the city to get into that business? And what parameters are there? I mean, this is just something that was not a thought that I was thinking until they kept coming up in all of the public forums we've had and so forth, so.
And my understanding, Councilmember DeMichele, that there was a bill passed by both houses of the Washington Legislature that will make this easier for cities to get into this business, but that bill has not yet been acted upon by the governor. So that's another question mark. I think broadband is a key issue. The question is, is the solution getting into the business ourself, or are there other opportunities for us to leverage improvements in broadband? Again, maybe it's a regional effort, but I'm not sure that it makes sense with all the other issues that the community is facing to say that we would jump on that bandwagon immediately.
Thank you very much.
All right, City Administrator, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time, so feel free to move on.
Great, thank you. On April 6th, the Mayor's Recovery Task Force had a meeting, again, to have a very initial discussion about these opportunities, and I wanted to share some comments that were heard at that task force. Next slide. Again, similar messages that we've heard from the task force previously about promoting the outdoors, thinking about kids. I think there was a discussion really centered around the impact on children during the pandemic, and are there opportunities to, you know, invest in them as they come out of this and go back to school? You know, the marketing Isqal, what can we do to continue to invest in the community to keep people here as well as to entice newcomers? Indeed, there was the infrastructure discussion. I think having everyone home made people very sensitive to the residential nature of the broadband infrastructure, where many of our residents, I think, are used to something a little bit more robust. And so regardless how the council chooses to spend $8.6 million, I think infrastructure issues and ensuring, you know, good solid broadband in the community is going to be an issue that we're going to need to deal with one way or another. The collaboration, we've already talked about. Next slide. Other comments, again, nutrition, I think making sure that the most vulnerable are taken care of, using some of the dollars to replenish the city's reserve funds, you know, taking the opportunity for infrastructure investment, looking at what we could do to support jobs, and then perhaps looking at what we can do to increase city staffing levels. I think the concern was that, expressed by the task force, that as we reduced our budget last year, certainly there were staffing positions that were eliminated, and would it make sense to revisit some of those with additional dollars? I'll only add the caveat here, of course, is that $8.6 million is one-time money. As we look at our ongoing revenue, you know, we are not seeing a corresponding increase in our ongoing revenue, so I think we just need to be thoughtful that any investments that we're making, you know, we have to be mindful that we're using one-time money and to, for any purpose, be careful not to spend that money on ongoing issues. Next slide. The next steps, looking for feedback tonight and guiding principles, really to get some 30,000-foot thoughts from the council on your ideas of what those guiding principles might be and any additional thoughts for public discussion. The administration would plan to come back on May 7th, I think with sort of a next step proposal. Again, my sense is that there may be items that are viewed as being especially critical that should be funded soon, and that would likely be included there. I don't anticipate that any proposal from the administration would come with a funding proposal for anything close to the entire amount of money, but again, if there are very critical needs that need to be funded, then I think that the administration will put that forward and look to the council to make some decisions by the end of June. Again, based on the discussion this evening and additional community feedback, none of this is really in stone, but clearly if there are things that are deemed critical, we should have the money in hand, the first half of the money in hand by the first part of June, certainly by the end of June. And so if there was a desire to make some sort of initial allocations, I think the soonest that that could be done would be toward the latter part of June. Next slide. So let me reiterate again, the mayor's three sort of overarching thoughts about moving forward, investing in recovery, investing in rebuilding our community, and also using this probably once in our professional lifetimes opportunity to receive such a large amount of federal dollars to see if there's an opportunity to reimagine how we're moving forward. So Councilmember Hall, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you this broad overview. I realize that it was a broad overview, it was not meant to be in any way programmatic or making specific recommendations. I think the mayor's desire this evening is just to get feedback from you on some of these broader guiding principles, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you very much, City Administrator Bob Kowits. All right, so we'll move into, if there are any other questions from council members before we open public comment, and I see Councilmember Goodman. Or are you making, is that getting in line for a comment there?
Yeah, I'll get in line for a comment, but I, sorry, I should have put questions and comment. I have a couple of questions. So, City Administrator Bob Kowits, what is the, two questions. What is the, is there any thought to the public process between now and either when you're coming back to us or in June? And then, number two, what is the administration's thought, or have you talked about, other than urgent needs, putting this money in play, I'll say in play, some or all of it as part of the budget process? Because that's a very, that's the most public, lengthiest public process we have every year. Also noting that, I think you said, maybe the timeline for spending is not until the end of 2024, so it's not like there's an urgent decision, urgent decisions to be made, it sounds like. So those are my two questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman, members of the council. I think certainly the mayor would like to continue to use the Recovery Task Force as a sounding board, and so they have a meeting scheduled in the month of May and the month of June, so I would imagine that that would be additional opportunities to get some community feedback. I think the mayor's also looking for the council's guidance, if there's other community outreach that might be needed in the near term. As far as spending money for the budget, I think that from the administration's standpoint, we look at the revenue loss, that that is the money that is available for general purposes. And so if that dollar amount remains at that roughly $2.8 million range, I think that would be the money that would be recommended to be invested, probably in capital projects. So as the council is talking about the capital spending, there may be opportunities there. But again, I think the mayor's hope is that tonight, the council focuses more on that larger guiding principle piece. I think a guiding principle may be to invest in infrastructure, to say that a portion of this money, since we can do that, should be invested in infrastructure. So that, I think, would be part of a guiding principle. But again, one-time money for one-time expenses, I think the capital budget really is the best thing we could marry to anything in the near term for needs in the community. Hope that answers your question.
Sort of, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council? I know I had one, but I just lost it, so I'll try and remember it and write it down. So if there aren't any other questions, then we will move on to a public comment section of this agenda item, and I will go to our clerk and ask if anyone has signed up to speak yet, and if not, we'll wait a moment to see if anyone would like to.
Hey, Councilmember Hall, no one has signed up to speak, but I will just remind anyone who's attending from the public tonight that if you'd like to make comments on this agenda item, you can raise your virtual hand. One way you might be able to do that is to open the participant panel and select the small hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. That option does vary by device. You can also send me, the host, a message, so I'll just wait just a moment to see if anyone wants to make comments. All right, and I'm not seeing anyone indicated desire to speak.
All right, thank you very much. Just a reminder to the six folks that are listening in, and anyone else watching on YouTube or on TV, that you can send us comments at citycouncil@isqalwa.gov whenever. All right, now that we've done public comment, let's move on to the direction phase. So are there any comments from council members in terms of guiding principles and direction of how we'd like to spend this money? And we'll open it off with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. Did we want Councilmember Goodman?
Oh, yeah, I was just about to say, Councilmember Walsh, my apologies. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to make a comment first?
No, that's okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Fantastic, this is Councilmember Walsh. So as City Administrator Bob Kowits mentioned, we had our little conversation point earlier today, and one of the things I was mentioning there is that I want to hear from the council, it's kind of, do we have a sense whether there are urgent needs and things that we're ready to spend on now versus what's our appetite for waiting, being strategic, seeing what other people have done? And I'm not sure where I land on that. I think my sense is, I wasn't as much of a fan of the piecemeal nature of our funding for business and human services and everything last year, so I lean more towards strategic as far as having a plan for the money, maybe working with other communities, but I wanted to bring that up as one thing that I think is really important. And then the other thought I had is kind of, how do we want to reimagine? You know, we've all heard this sense of, don't go back to normal, you know, move forward rather than going back. And so I'm wondering, one of the things I've thought about is, as a community, I think we've benefited quite a bit from a large group of the population working from home. We've seen fewer cars on the road, we've had people around during the day who can attend our businesses, you know, eat meals here. So it's helped, I think, the citizens and the city. And so I wonder what we could do as a reimagining to encourage that type of remote work going forward? forward? What would investments there look like? Is it just broadband? Or is there a sense of, you know, I don't even know, I don't know what that is, but that's the type of question I want to ask, is how do we want to move forward and how could this money be used toward that idea? And what other things can we do to collaborate with other communities and use the money toward that way?
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to councilmember Goodman.
So the part of my comments were just embedded in my couple of questions that I asked before. And I think one of the questions you asked was about the public process and, you know, our largest, lengthiest public process during the year is our budgeting process. And also, I mean, I think I like the idea of the Recovery Task Force because that emphasizes the fact that this should be a community-based decision, decisions about the money, not just from the Recovery Task Force, but we also have a strategic plan that is supposed to provide the strategic planning framework for us for five years. So, and that is supposed to be reflected in our budget every year. So I have a, think we have, other than urgent needs and, which I don't know what they are, and reimbursing, which we could make decisions earlier on that, I suppose. To me, it seems like the path forward is, for the public process would be the budget process. In terms of the themes, the guiding principles, I'm fine with the guiding principles. I think that guiding principles that have their basis in our strategic plan, I think is the smartest way to go. This is, in its, it's barely an infant yet, don't have the money, and I would, my preference is not to jump out as fast as we can and treat it like something we have to spend right away. The reimagining, again, we're not even, we're not even through the pandemic yet, so I think, but yet, you know, I'm already having trouble getting back out onto Sixth Avenue from my office every day. So people are not just staying home now. And we used to think that maybe, wow, maybe some of our traffic issues will disappear. Nope, still takes forever to get down to Squaw Ho Bar Road. So anyway, I'm fine with the guiding principles. I also don't think that that's something that we have to lock in tonight. I like the direction, and that's, I don't have any strong opinions about exactly what those words should be. Public process should continue into the budget, except maybe for urgent needs and reimbursements that we think are important, and guiding principles are fine. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, councilmember Goodman. Next, we'll go to deputy council president Ray.
Thank you, councilmember Hall, this is Chris Ray. Couple of thoughts, I'll start with the guiding principles. I find them a little overly broad. I mean, if we're talking strategic plan and then the strategic plans, guiding principles, those are very broad strokes. So if we could narrow in on something that's a little more finite, that would make this work better for me. I like getting input from the Recovery Task Force, but I came across an interesting phrase about governments, it's called STP, the same 20 people. And sometimes I wonder that we're getting input from the same 20 people in all sorts of different forums. So I would rather, in addition to the Recovery Task Force, I would like us to find a way to reach out to a broader segment of the population so that we get a little more diverse points of view. Since we have until the end of 2024 to spend the recovery money, in my mind, time to spend equals time to plan, and I think we should take that time to plan, and as councilmember Walsh so accurately hit it on the head, you know, let's put together a comprehensive approach to the spending of the money instead of a little bit here and a little bit there. That being said, if we have an area of our community that is in crisis and is in immediate need of the money, be it our businesses, be it our residents, or be it our partners, then those are things that I think we should bubble up sooner rather than later so that we can take action to deal with those crises in a more timely manner. But beyond that, in the concept of recover, rebuild, and reimagine, I think, you know, the vast majority of our expenditure should be on the reimagine part of those three steps. And I, from my perspective, I would want to spend the vast majority of this money on how do we reimagine going forward? There's some rebuilding to do, there's some recovering to do, but I think the real opportunity is around reimagining. Thank you.
And thank you. And now we will go to council president Hunt.
Thank you, this is council president Hunt. I agree with a lot of what I've heard my fellow councilmembers say. I do think that the recover component of the guiding principles is the most important and probably the most time-sensitive. And so I would like to get a better sense on, for example, how time-sensitive is working with some of our partners such as Eastside Fire and Rescue to understand their reimbursement needs, how urgent is that? We had, we did receive a letter from them, we don't, I don't think we have information or it wasn't presented about Simamish Plateau Water, which, as was mentioned, also serves part of Issaquah, but is not eligible for funding the same way the city is and the Swedish hospital. So I would like to get a sense for those needs because I think in my, in my viewing of this, the recovery part and the urgency on that is the most important for us to act on soon. And then the rebuilding and potential reimagining, I think we should develop a comprehensive strategy around that. I think we can take more time, I think we can think through the CIP and the budget process, how we can get more feedback through those processes around how we spend this I personally don't think I would have put reimagine as a guiding principle. I think we have a strategic plan that we can recommit to, or we can revitalize and we can resume that plan. But I think it is definitely the third tier guiding principle for me. We also have an equity lens, that's part of our strategic plan, and I think we're better equipped now to actually look at our planning with an equity lens now than we have been in the past, so I would like to recommit to that principle. And I think we have a lot of input from the community that has gone into the strategic plan, that has gone into the way we've structured our infrastructure commitments in the CIP, and I think those are, those are good guiding documents for us. So I don't, so I guess, I wouldn't use the word reimagine because I think we have a lot of guidance that we should make sure we follow through on those plans. Yeah, so that, and then one other thing, I do think infrastructure will end up being a big part of this. We know we have a lot of infrastructure needs in transportation and parks, and we have already in our CIP process been talking about potentially needing new sources of revenue for those. That's unclear, but at the same time, we know we have sewer and water, stormwater, infrastructure projects that are very important to the community, and I do think that those projects, those need to be considered in the balance, and I think we can do that over time, but definitely those commitments are, they're commitments we've made, I think, to the community, and I think we need to put those, we need to think through those in a comprehensive way as we go forward with planning for the use of the money. Thanks.
Thank you, and now we'll go to councilmember Marts.
Thank you, councilmember Hall. First and foremost, I think we need to recognize that not only is this pandemic not over, but we may actually be quite far from being over. You know, there were 1,700 new COVID positive cases today in the state of Washington. Atlantic Magazine today had a really good article on the global pandemic implications on what's going on in India right now and how it may impact the emergence of variants of the virus, not all of which may be covered by the vaccines that we have in front of us. So I think first and foremost, we have to recognize that we have to tread carefully and that, you know, a lot of us on this call have one or two shots of vaccine in us and we're feeling, I personally am feeling more sanguine than I've felt for most of the last year, but we have to be super careful. I find the Recovery Task Force principles elucidated here really strong and have, and are good, specific suggestions that I like. Of those, the one that seems most acute is the keeping businesses here portion of it. You know, one of the things about businesses is that financial shocks to businesses aren't always immediate, and sometimes what they do is they inflict a wound on the business that actually takes a while for it to sort of fully, forgive the phrase, metastasize. So that having been said, if you said to me, would you like free money or would you not like free money, I would say, I would like free money, please. So we need to figure out, I think the essential issue here for the administration is going to be to identify what is the acute need in the business community. I don't know how, I don't know how it does it, but there are bright people in the administration, and I trust that they will figure it, help figure it out and look to some of our partner cities and look to the county and help figure that out. But I think that's where the acute need is and the need that we can't wait very long because we have so many wonderful businesses that have managed to survive thus far, and it would be extremely sad to me to see so many of these great businesses, any of them stumble here in what we all hope is the final third quarter of the pandemic. Recover, rebuild, reimagine, sure. Recover, I think, is the intent for a lot of this money from the federal level, but I recognize, you know, we will soon start thinking about the things that we thought about before COVID, and our infrastructure needs are still there, and I thank councilmember Goodman for pointing out, you know, the traffic is coming back. I don't leave my house very often, but the few times I have been out, I've been impressed by, if that's the right word, with how much traffic is coming back. So all these things will be important. So I guess the core thing here is identify where the acute need is. I think the Recovery Task Force suggestions are great. Figure out where the acute need is, particularly in our business community, address that, but with the rest of it, be very careful and make sure we understand whether we are in fact getting to the end of this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Marts. And councilmember De Michelle, you're up next.
Thank you. Following up with, on councilmember Marts' comments, as one of our former defense secretaries said, we have a lot of unknown unknowns, and what we don't have, we have lots of unknown unknowns that may still be, still be coming, and so it's hard to, hard to put a, you know, our arms around what's happening when there are so many things that could still happen to set us backwards again. I think that the restore, rebuild, and reimagine is a good framework, and on the restore part, I would very much like to see us backfill on some of our revenue losses from last year. I think that's an important thing that we could do for our community, and then I think my next thing would be the rebuild, and I think rebuild the economy, the economic vitality of this community is absolutely essential. And then reimagine, I would plead with everyone to please, let's not forget the arts, and because, to me, the arts are just essential to our economic recovery. They are part of our economic recovery, but they are also how we knit our community back together. The arts lift up people. The arts have been particularly hard-hit during the pandemic. Village Theater has lost millions of dollars, or, you know, many, many arts organizations are just hanging on by their fingertips. So for, I think, a relatively modest investment, we could make a huge impact on our economic recovery by investing a fairly modest amount of funds in our arts commission activities and our arts community. I also want to remind everybody that we put in about two years of work developing the Creative Arts District, and I remember the night that Amy Dukes came in front of us and announced that we had received that from the state of Washington. And it was very shortly thereafter that we shut down, you know, our public meetings and the governor declared everything closed, and so that Creative Art District has really not achieved the potential that it had for us and the promise that it had for us. So again, is there something that we can do, or is there investment we can make fairly modest, again, to get that Creative Art District back up, operating, and use that as a platform for reimagining what our community is going to look like? I think the arts are the way to go if we're talking about reimagining our future. So those are my comments. Let me just check, I have some notes, and just check if I've covered everything I wanted to talk about. Oh, right, and in terms of fitting in with the strategic plan and with our concerns for redeveloping tourism and travel and the hospitality business, again, the arts are essential to all of those things. I just see it as a linchpin to the future year or two, and in some ways, perhaps a little bit urgent too, depending on how the pandemic plays out over the summer. We could put some money into that this summer to see if we can reinvigorate, depending on, again, whether we get shut down or not in the months ahead. So those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councilmember De Michelle. We have one person up for round two, if it's all okay with you guys, I'll share some of my own comments before we move on to round two as well. I haven't really heard anything that I disagree with in reading the materials and watching the meetings before this meeting. I, to answer councilmember Walsh's question, didn't necessarily see any critical or time-sensitive needs before us, but I would be very interested in what the administration thinks about that, and some other councilmembers here have asked tonight to get an idea of what those immediate critical needs might be. I agree that, ooh, what was it that council president, council deputy president Ray said, time to spend equals time to plan. I really liked that. I think that there have been some really strong state and federal responses in human services and landlord and tenant assistance and business assistance that'll be interesting to watch play out, and, you know, we'll want to watch them play out, but also we'll need time to digest what the state has just done too. I'm sure that there may be some unfunded mandates that need to be covered, so this might be an opportunity to, well, actually, it's one-time funding, so it might not be a good idea to use that for something that we'd be responsible going forward, but still important to keep an eye on as we're interpreting what the state has just done. So beyond that, the only thing that is important to me personally is ensuring that, you know, city revenues are backfilled and that we are able to support our partners, including Eastside Fire and Rescue, and I would be very open and interested in what administration thinks about what kind of level of backfill and support that would look like. The only other thing I'll add, and just because I'm interested in the topic, and I agree with councilmember De Michelle on supporting Councilmember De Michele on supporting the arts, I'm not entirely sure how urgent it is, but there are correlations between a creative economy and your financial economy and investing in that kind of talent which helps the full economy. So I, I completely agree that that is worthwhile in terms of funding and supporting that space within our community. So I'll shut up for now and we'll move on to round two. Council President Hunt, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I'll start with a question for City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Would the administration do things differently or would there be a time-sensitive nature for making a decision on reimbursement of lost funds for the city?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I, I think the only urgency may be what funds the council might like to use for the budget process of operating in capital for the fall. So I don't know that there's an urgent need at this juncture to make that allocation, but I think as long as the options are there and the money's not expended, that, that would make sense. Certainly as you go through the capital budget, for example, I think you may very well identify funding needs and so that might, you might put a, put a place marker for a project or a few projects that might need funds and then revisit that through the operating budget. But I think as you have said and others have said this evening, things like where Eastside Fire and Rescue stands and if there's a, an influx of dollars that they would think they need sooner than later, perhaps that also might balance out for the budget process as well. We've not had conversations with any of our partners. I think we are, we are among the first communities, certainly in the region, having discussions like this. I think many communities are gearing up for these discussions, so I think we'll know more next 30, 60, 90 days where some of our partners are and so maybe some emergent needs come from those discussions too.
Thank you for, for that. I think with that in mind, I, I did hear a strong, a strong agreement from the Recovery Task Force and, and other community members that I've talked to that recouping the lost revenue for the city is something that I think we can all understand is, is one of the intents of this funding and so I, I would certainly be open to that. I think doing it as part of the budget process makes sense as long as there isn't urgent need. I also wanted to add that I think the city has done a really good job developing partnerships through this last year. The, the main really great example has been the Vaccine Partnership with the Snoqualmie Tribe, the City of Issaquah, Samamish and Eastside Fire and Rescue. And so I think that's a really good example showing the whole can be more than the sum of the parts with these partnerships and if we have time to develop partnerships for how we can spend money that will better benefit all of the partners than if we were to develop plans separately, I do think that's, that is potentially strategic and also would better serve our community. And so I do think since we have that time, if we can continue in the partnership development and understanding our partners' needs and especially understanding the needs of our partners that weren't eligible for this funding, I think that would be really important and potentially time-sensitive. And the other thing with reimbursing our revenue is that I do believe since the arts fund revenues were one of the lost revenues that were outlined in the city's expenses, if we were to make a decision to reimburse the city's revenue, which I think there's a strong argument there that we should do that with these funds, I believe that that would be reimbursed as part of that process.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Next up I had Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Chris Ray. Couple follow-on questions. One is, when I was thinking about organizations such as Eastside Fire and Rescue and recognizing that as a partnership, that clearly strikes me as something where we need to go with any support that we want to offer together with, at a minimum, the other two cities that are in the partnership of Samamish and North Bend and, and do that as a consolidated front. So this may be more of an issue of timing. So the one thing that I would like the administration to consider going forward is around, and this is somewhat very loosely related to recouping revenue because, you know, we were really prudent and we had good fund balance, so yes, we will need to recoup the revenue, but it's a bit of a, a bookkeeping thing because we didn't really overly draw down on fund balance. Our fund balancers are still within our, our limits, so I don't feel like we're, we're in a position where we have to pump a lot of cash into fund balance to get them back up to where they, they were. But there are a lot of programs that we discontinued because of the pandemic and so the next question is, when are we going to restart some of the programs and some of the fundings into Councilmember De Michele's point? You know, arts is one of them, you know, senior center is one of them. What are we doing with the community center? There's a number of programs that we put on ice during the pandemic and so along with looking at some of the, oh gosh, what was the, the great word that Councilmember Martz used? It was, wasn't crisis, because that was my word, but the ones that are in, in peril, you know, we need to step up to that. But then like the second thing to look at is what programs do the city start or can the city start before we get into the next fiscal year? And then beyond that, and my take is, everything else can go through the budget process. So, you know, what are the things that are in peril? What are the programs that we had in place that we discontinued that we should restart? And what would those look like? And then finally, and they're not in peril, they have, they are acute. And, and then the, the programs that we can restart such as arts and senior center and parks and things like that. And then finally, the, the rest of the, the work to be done, I think we can handle in the 2022 budget cycle.
All right, thank you. Next up for comments, we have Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. I just wanted to be sure, I wanted it on the record that I absolutely support whatever we can do for Eastside Fire and Rescue, so just count me as another councilmember in supporting that. I, and then I also wanted to follow up, Councilmember Martz made a good point about sometimes the impacts of disasters take a long time to roll out and I think that's true of individuals as well. So when we're looking at human services funding, we have all, a great deal of money coming for rental assistance and those kinds of things. So perhaps our focus, we might want to be sure that we're watching, you know, how, how is the, are, are there great demands for mental health services coming up in our community? Need for substance abuse counseling, those, those kinds of things may be the impacts that we're going to see roll out over the next year or two and things that we need to look at in terms of human services funding, so it may be a shift in where emphasis is. So, and again, you know, known unknowns because we really won't know until things start to get back to normal what the overall impacts are going to be. Thank you.
And thank you. And we have a question from Councilmember Goodman. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So I just want to make sure that I understand. So there was a question about programs and making sure that we've got programs that were not halting, my understanding of the inquiry or the comment was about programs and making sure that we maybe are reimbursing or providing money so that we're not continuing to halt programs. So my question is to Administrator Bob Kowitz, because I thought I'd seen some updates to the council. My question is, are we not, are we, are there programs that we are not restarting for lack of money right now? Or are we restarting programs as the guidelines allow us and, and when it makes sense to do so, but not budgetary impacts? That's my question, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I guess this is a question for the chair. We have another item coming up that's talking about return to office and Deputy Council President Ray raised these issues with me regarding primarily our Parks and Rec programs. Brian Burnson is, I believe, on the call and is ready to answer those questions for the next item. And so if that's sufficient, we can, we can cover where we're at, because we did share with the council last week some information and I think there was a desire by the Deputy Council President just to have that shared with the public tonight and have some questions answered. So Chair Hall and Councilmember Goodman, if all of us, if you would like to wait for the next item, we'll be able to cover that. But, but generally speaking, we are moving forward to offer programs and services we can based on the phases and, and the reopening strategies. So there's no hindrance there, especially on the Parks and Rec side. Probably the biggest program that we have no intent to restart at this juncture is passports. You know, that there, that that is just not something that's on the cards right now, but as far as the recreation programs, we're, we're phasing those back in as we can and we'll have more information in a little while this evening.
I'm fine waiting, thank you.
Oh, great. Any other comments from the council for administration? There were kind of a lot, there was a lot of feedback, which is great, lots of scribbles, but I think that there were some kind of key overall takeaways from this conversation that I'm happy to run through if there are any additional comments. So some of the things that I heard come up the most were, you know, asking the administration to try and figure out, you know, what are these accurate, or acute, urgent needs that exist in our community, whether they be in our business community with our partners, including Eastside Fire and Rescue, or with the Vaccine Partnership, or in the community that we might not be aware of, that might inform councils, we decide whether or not to spend some of this money sooner rather than later. So that came up from most people. We also heard, you know, beyond acute needs, we quote, "have time to spend, so we have time to plan." I love that. And if we have time to plan, we can, I heard some interest in pushing some of this conversation also to budget development from a number of councilmembers. I heard a lot of interest in supporting a lost city revenues and supporting our partners. I brought up partners already. And then in terms of other stuff, kind of recognizing that impacts take a long time to fully present themselves in the community, so keeping a watchful eye on things that might become more urgent, especially as the future of the pandemic presents itself and we don't necessarily know what the coming months or years will bring. Would anyone on council like to add anything that I didn't particularly bring up? Those were just kind of the big things that I brought up. I'm also happy to run through my entire list if people would like me to. All right, City Administrator Bob Kowitz, do you have what you need in terms of direction on guiding principles on next steps?
Councilmember Hall, members of the council, yes. Thank you. Appreciate the thoughtful suggestions. We'll likely be back in June with, at the very least, an update. We'll continue to reach out to our partners and do some follow-up as directed by the council and again, we're early days here. I think we're among the first communities in the region that are even having these broader discussions, so appreciate you taking the time to do that and we'll be back probably in June. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, City Administrator. With that, we'll close that part of our agenda and move on to the next part, which is ID 0879, Facility Reopening Update presented by our very own Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator. Andrea, feel free to take it away when you're ready.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator for the City of Issaquah. And I am presenting this on behalf of a team that has been working on this. The team consists of folks from IT and other parts of the mayor's office and community, including communication, facilities and parks and several others that we've been kind of pooling together to try to plan for the reopening of City Hall and providing more in-person services. Also on that team is a consultant that we've hired, Tom Beckwith, who many of you might remember from the work that was previously done on city facilities in 2019 and also a team of architects called ARC. So they are also assisting us with this reopening plan and planning for how much space we will need moving forward for providing these in-person services again. I should also say, I know that there was some question about parks and recreation services. The focus tonight is really on in-person services that we're not providing today, like permitting services, utility billing services, services that are normally done in person out of City Hall in downtown Issaquah as well as City Hall Northwest. So that's really our focus today, but as City Administrator Bob Kowitz said, Brian Burnson is on, on the line to be able to answer your questions about parks and recreation services that we're offering through the community center. Next slide, please, Tricia. Great. So like I said, the purpose of tonight's presentation and discussion is to provide an update on what our plan and approach is so far with reopening City Hall and providing in-person services once pandemic-related restrictions are lifted. And, you know, we're doing our best to plan for this future, as has been said often this evening. There's a lot that we don't know and a lot that's very hard to predict and so we are trying to be as flexible as possible while also ensuring that we can provide in-person services as soon as allowable. Next slide, please. Great. The direction that we're looking for you, for me tonight, members of the city council, is feedback on our approach to reopening the city facilities, specifically not returning to City Hall Northwest, feedback, any feedback or concerns you might have with moving that permit counter to the downtown City Hall and, and, you know, at this, at this time, I'd just like to say, we don't think it's a good option for us to return to City Hall and so as we plan for that, we're really hoping that city council can provide any concerns you have with that plan. And those reasons are, are going to be listed later on this presentation as well as they're detailed in the memo in the packet associated with tonight's meeting. The second thing that we're looking for feedback on from city council is reopening in July, that's when we're planning. Again, this is all based on the best public health guidance that we have and Governor Inslee, any orders that are issued out of his office. We, of course, will be compliant with all of those things. Right now, we're tentatively trying to plan for July with limited hours for in-person services and encouraging appointments during Phase 1. So still providing some in-person services, but a hybrid of services and keeping those in-person services limited for a number of reasons. That's, that's really the direction that we're looking for you tonight on those two items. Next slide, thank you, Tricia. So some background, we've, we started looking at our city facilities actually a couple of years before COVID started and much of the workforce has transitioned to working from home. We realized that there were some problems with, with the city facilities such as customer confusion. We operate out of many different buildings all across the city and many of the services that we have, that we offer for in-person services in a typical year are, again, scattered throughout those buildings across the city. And so we were finding that at the very minimum, one out of three walk-in customers for the city, we were having to refer to another location and sometimes that location was off-site. And so that created a lot of customer confusion, knowing which building to go to for what and certainly we didn't like to serve the public in that way by referring so many people to another building. Another issue that we had noticed was a lack of security. Many of our buildings don't meet current security standards for public buildings or for office buildings and of course, we want to keep everybody safe. Maintenance needs, ongoing maintenance needs of some of our aging structures, we were trying to get a handle on that and how to plan for that moving forward. And overcrowding of some of our facilities, specifically the police station. We, we have been sharing that building with them, with other city services and the downtown City Hall was originally built to be a police station and they are growing in their needs in terms of evidence storage and personnel offices and And, and so we're having some crowding in that building as well. In addition, there's, there's many other issues that are discussed in the memo, including accessibility for people with disabilities. That's an issue in some of our buildings as well and very difficult to correct. Next slide. So based off of some of these issues that we were seeing, we conducted a property assessment in 2019 that would really drive a long-range facility plan. Some of you council members may recall this discussion that we had a couple of years ago. And the direction that we received from council then was to conduct public engagement to figure out what does the public want out of their facilities moving forward, especially in the long range or long-term time. And of course, we were planning to do this public engagement in 2020 and the pandemic put a stop to those plans while we pivoted and focused on responding to the pandemic and the city's most urgent needs. Meanwhile, despite many of our city facilities that normally serve the public, like City Hall Northwest, being closed to the public, the City Hall Northwest continues to degrade. There's all the problems with its conditions and maintenance that we saw before the pandemic and a few things have, have occurred since then. The front doors have been broken, those are the doors that the public would enter into. They're going to be, from what I understand, pretty costly to fix, as well as some issues with the fire sprinklers. And so despite not being open, there still continues to be some significant maintenance needs that are occurring and we're discovering as time progresses. Next slide, please. So as part of our approach to planning for what this reopening would look like, we have conducted a couple of surveys. The first survey that we've conducted is a customer survey, trying to understand from the public that we serve, what they would like to see from their service. And the survey results are included in the packet for this evening, as well as a summary of those results in the memo. So I'm really just going to hit the very highlights here, which is that we have seen a slight decrease in the service quality ratings from the pre-pandemic to present day during the pandemic, where many of the services became virtual. And we also heard from our community that they want options. They want, there's still a strong interest in in-person services and a preference for in-person services, but they still want to have the ability to be able to receive some services virtual if they choose. Next slide, please. And we also conducted an employee survey to find out what their preferences are. And we understand that most employees that are teleworking want to continue to telework one to four days per week. And the results were pretty spread almost evenly, 15% to 25% for working one or two or three or four days each. 50% of our workforce, roughly 50% of our workforce, is teleworking, with the other 50% working in the field or as they would have normally pre-pandemic. And the other thing that we discovered from our employees was that they do have a long-term preference for assigned workstations rather than shared workstations, which affects how we plan for space over the long term. Next slide, please. So we've used the customer feedback and the employee feedback, as well as considerations of what our peers are doing and what facilities we have available, to come up with our approach to reopening and providing more in-person services. And here, they're identified as phases. I understand that there are, there's a lot of nomenclature about reopening and different phases and that can get very confusing. And so excuse me while we fumble through this, this awkward time, but maybe we can refer that to them as steps, or maybe we can refer to it as the timing of when we think this is going to happen, just to try to provide more clarity around the plan. Because I understand there's a lot of different plans and nomenclature. So the first step, what we are anticipating at this point, is to reopen to in-person services in July. Again, pending governor orders and public health guidance. And that would also mean that we would, at that time, move our permit counter out of City Hall Northwest to City Hall in order to concentrate and better consolidate our in-person services to one building. And again, avoid having to send a lot of the city customers in walk-in traffic across town for different services. Next slide, please. Thank you. Few more details about what this first step would look like in terms of our reopening come July. Again, permitting, utility billing, pet licensing services would be consolidated to the downtown City Hall. And we would offer hours for walk-in services, but they would be limited as compared to pre-pandemic times. Virtual services, of course, would still remain as they are today, Monday through Friday, eight to five. And that, and then we have, we would prioritize City Hall office space for staff who provide in-person services. We know not every staff person from City Hall Northwest and City Hall is going to be able to fit in an already overcrowded building. And so we need to prioritize a space in City Hall for those staff who do provide the in-person services at City Hall. And much of the workforce would remain teleworking at least some days of the week. And then we would also look at moving all public meetings from City Hall Northwest to another building. And so that means no more use of the pickering room for some of our commission meetings or public hearings. And we would look to using another city facility to do that. We're in progress of identifying where exactly that would be. But that would, in effect, mean that City Hall would be largely closed, still file storage and a few employees using it as a base camp or field office. Next slide, please. Great, thank you. And then we have the second part of our plan, which is as restrictions decrease related to the pandemic, as we're able to, to have more people vaccinated, et cetera, we are looking at what that next step would be. And that would still consolidate much of our in-person services and walk-in services by taking the, the services that were normally offered out of City Hall and City Hall Northwest and putting them under one roof in a leased space, that we would lease the space for that. And that would mean that the police department and perhaps some court-related personnel would still have space in City Hall, in the downtown City Hall. Specifics of that plan, next slide, thank you, Tricia. That means that 130 East Sunset Way, which is our downtown City Hall, would become a police station, as originally intended, and may also have space for court offices, that the mayor's office, finance departments that are currently using the downtown City Hall, along with community planning and development, engineering, and other departments, would move to that leased City Hall space. This would be implemented after the pandemic, next year, as more in-person services anticipated and we need more staff to return to the office to be able to provide those services. And then knowing that the City of Issaquah has been around for almost 130 years and that we intend on being around for an additional 130 years, that we would, we would create that long-term facilities plan to follow. So it's likely not the best financially sound plan for the City of Issaquah to continue to rent facilities into perpetuity to be able to offer our basic City Hall services. And so we would work with city council and the community on what that long-term facilities plan should be and look like. This is really an interim plan that we're coming up with until we have that long-term plan in place. Next slide, please. Great, thank you. So timing and next steps. We would look to return in May to city council to discuss more options about that leased space next year, what that Phase Two, our second step, would look like. The discussion would include service delivery models, so how much services do we want to provide in person versus virtual, based off of what we've heard from our community so far? It would also include ideas around space planning for staff. How much do we want to support telework and shared workstations versus assigned workstations? And the reason why we would have these conversations is we'd be joining almost every organization across the region and across the nation, doing this to figure out how much space do we really need to lease? And, and by understanding how we want to serve the public and how we want our employees to serve the public, where from, then we can understand how much space we would need to lease. And that will guide the conversation for that second step of what we, what we do next year regarding city facilities. Next slide, please. Again, a direction that we're looking for, feedback from city council tonight, if there are things that we need to consider as the administration plans to move in-person services from City Hall Northwest to City Hall. And if a city council has any concerns or feedback regarding reopening in July with limited hours for in-person services and encouraging appointments during Phase One. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Administrator. Appreciate the thoughtful presentation. So we'll now move into Q and A. Any questions from the council on anything we just heard on either step? Councilmember Walsh, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Andrea, with the concept of doing public services, all public services out of the main City Hall, have we looked at whether the parking there is adequate for both the employees that we would serve, as well as people who are coming in for those types of services, permits, et cetera? And I particularly ask that because I don't know where the senior center is on reopening. And so I'm kind of trying to understand what the parking needs are for that area and whether we have enough for all of the various needs that use that parking.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. That is a great question. Parking in that area has been difficult at times. The senior center, I believe, and Brian Bernstein can certainly speak to this in greater detail than I can, but we are beginning to reopen some services out of the senior center. And so parking, I believe the parking situation would be probably about the same as it would be pre-pandemic. So knowing that we have customers that are needing to come into City Hall, we would probably have fewer employees overall at City Hall than during pre-pandemic times, which saves a little bit on parking in the area. But we would still have the seniors coming back to the senior center in some capacity for services. So Brian, do you want to speak to the senior center programming?
Yeah, thank you. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, the senior center is, has actually been doing really, really well and we've been very active even throughout COVID. And listen to some of the conversation, I don't know even if you'd like to know more. We've actually had quite a bit of programming going on at all of our facilities throughout COVID and even more now. We, you know, the administration took a very nimble and flexible approach. So as we've been allowed, as we're watching the governor's advice, CDC, public health, you know, we're on that dial. We crank up our services and activities and programs, or we dial it back based on the guidance that we're receiving. Currently, right now, at the senior center, we have, you know, we've been offering meals five days a week for lunch. We do a lot of virtual programming and have over the, over the break and a lot of phone calls and research with the health councilor too, to this, our food bank that we do to keep in touch with seniors that are isolated, to make sure that we're making those connections. Right now, we've actually brought in, and we have reserved time for people to use pool and ping pong. We have a lot of our in-person groups, like Let's Talk About It, a couple of different knitting groups. I can't name them all that are coming in and meeting. They have to sign up beforehand. So, you know, everybody's wearing a face mask, we're following best practices and social distancing. In the evenings, we also have a karate class that is actively participating there and running their classes in a socially-distanced manner and according to all the guidance. So it's actually quite busy, the seniors there right now.
All right, thank you.
But I, I think, sorry, Councilmember Hall.
Go ahead.
In short, to, to try to answer Councilmember Walsh's question, yes, there, we think that there is enough parking, but it's not, it, it will be very similar to how it was before the pandemic.
Can I jump in real quick too? On the, on the north end of the senior center as well, there's some parking over there that often goes unused, that is also very accessible.
Thank you very much, the both of you. Councilmember Walsh, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Great. Next up is Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Couple of questions. What's the, what's the proposed customer support interface at Custer, at City Hall going to look like under this proposed closing City Hall Northwest?
Are you, this is Andrea Snyder. Councilmember Martz, are you referring to what software, software programs we may be looking into, or what the in-person front desk services might look like?
In-person front desk.
Great, thank you. So we are looking at a number of options. Our consultants and the architect team are going to be giving us those layout options this week for us to take a look at. We are really trying to think about how to use the space creatively in order to better serve the public with this change. And one of the things that I know we've gotten feedback from over the years is it's a little confusing when you enter City Hall, because there's the police counter there that's sometimes open, sometimes not. The rest of the City Hall facilities and front counter is upstairs. It's not particularly intuitive for the average person walking in and wanting to access a service. And so we are looking at options that would try to make that a little bit more intuitive, including the possibility of using the first floor to have a more consolidated public-facing presence. And so we need to look at what those options are while also minimizing some costs for this temporary measure.
Okay. Do we know the current split, or I should say, the pre-COVID split, on customers per day at City Hall versus what it was at City Hall Northwest?
We do not. Also, we served a large number of customers and families through our passport center, which was located in City Hall Northwest. And so as we look to, at this stage, providing services just for the permit counter and for utility billing, pet licenses, things like that, that's going to look a little different than how City Hall Northwest operated pre-pandemic, when we had a very busy permit, passport center.
Okay. And my final question is around ADA. So, and I hear that you're saying that things might move to the first floor, but I would think, I mean, I would think if things stayed on the second floor, there might be limitations around ADA, because only having, the current configuration is only one elevator, right, to get to the second floor, for the public?
Yes, Councilmember Martz, there is one active, working elevator in City Hall. City Hall has better accessibility for people with disabilities than City Hall Northwest. And so our real concerns with, significant concerns with accessibility and being compliant with the ADA lie within the City Hall Northwest building.
But did the public ever go to anything other than the first floor in City Hall Northwest?
Yes, excuse me, yes, they, they did, yes. But also accessibility of bathroom use and other things, we lack compliance in those areas in City Hall Northwest.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions from the council before we head into a public comment? All right, I'm not seeing any, so we shall open the public comment for this agenda item, which again is ID 0879, about city facilities and returning to that, those spaces. Just a reminder, if there's anyone on the call who would like to make a public comment, there are a couple ways. We'd ask you to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star three, and if you've And if you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon on your screen and you can find that by finding the participant panel and choosing raise hand in the lower right-hand corner. Tisha, let me know if there's anything else I was supposed to say there.
No, that was perfect. And I'm taking just a minute here to monitor the members of the public on the line. And it doesn't appear that anyone is interested in making comments at this time.
All right, in that case, we will, just a reminder that you can always email us at citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. We'd be happy to hear your comments on this agenda item and any other item before council. And with that, we'll move on to comments and direction from the city council. I see the line is already starting, so we will start with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So my notes as I was preparing tonight are similar to Councilmember Walsh's in one respect in that I had questions about parking. And there, we have a longstanding, at the very least, perception of a parking issue downtown, probably because we have a small city. And if you go to Seattle, it's easy to accept that you may have to walk a couple of blocks at least to get somewhere, but here you kind of expect to pull up pretty close. That's not the case when you're going to City Hall. When we have a full house, many of those parking spaces are taken out by employees closest, which means that the public has to park a lot of times across the street. And that can be a busy street, or it's the perception that it's a busy street. So I would hope that we would think about the demand for in-person services and think about possibly dedicating spaces for visitors and also for employees. We may not have as many returning, but to make room for people who spend maybe a shorter period downtown or visiting City Hall, that maybe we would have further away parking required for employees. So we make space for folks and we may have to have some additional ADA parking. There were several, I'll call them secret parking spaces along Sunset, and our police force identified those and marked them for themselves, which is not necessarily not appropriate. And it is appropriate, but it also means the elimination of several spaces that are convenient for City Hall. So I would hope that we would think about that and prioritize our visitors, our customers when they're coming to City Hall. The other thought I have is for more or less the future phase, and I know we're thinking about a different, you know, different, you know, long-term lease or something and maybe, and then switching that over to all police and courts, additional services for court if needed, which was the original plan for that 23 or four years ago. But the best laid plans don't necessarily happen quickly. And as we have seen the traffic return, that becomes quite a busy space, place downtown. And so one of my concerns in the, not so much near term, but maybe midterm, is that we create more of a traffic congestion issue as City Hall becomes sort of a hub for public visiting for City Hall. So my, not that this is a suggestion, but just for the administration to hear my thoughts because I have said it before when we were doing the Central Issaquah Plan. My personal preference for a City Hall location, although it sounds attractive to be downtown where the court is, where the City Hall is, where the community center is, is not necessarily downtown. If we're going to, at some point, co-locate most city employees where that, whether that's more than we have now or tons, you know, a lot of people, that it's away from the old town, downtown area because it becomes, the more service, city services we focus downtown, the more of a traffic magnet it becomes and the more of a traffic problem we have down there. We had looked at buildings further away, close, you know, before, down in the FedEx Brown Bear area and also over in the SR 900 Gilman area. And you can just, you know, envision traffic sort of moving around as, you know, little magnet areas. And in areas where we don't have quite as much of a traffic interface with pedestrians and people trying to walk downtown, to me, that makes more sense. That's not why we're here, but I'm just throwing it out here because I might not necessarily be here when you all are talking about this in detail. And then I suppose the only other thought that I had is the, you know, what, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan. And I like the idea of allowing the permit center to be City Hall. I'm not envisioning quite how the spacing is going to work out for employees, but that's not my problem. But I am concerned about the what if, what if it doesn't work out the way you say, then what's our plan B? So that's just what I hope you guys think about. What if it is not the wonderful Phase One planning that we thought? But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide feedback. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goodman. Next up is Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So this does remind me very much of the decision when it comes time to start thinking about a new car, right? And it is easy to come up with arguments to buy a new car and it is easy to come up with arguments to not buy a new car. But what you really, I think, should do is look at the financial situation. And when the cost of the new car is less than what you're paying in the maintenance and deferred maintenance that cropped up on your existing vehicle, that is for sure a good time to consider a new or pre-owned car. So we did a facilities study in, what, Councilmember Goodman, 2017, 2016? It's been a while now. And it was really good. And it talked about the building deferred, you know, the growing deferred maintenance associated with City Hall Northwest. And it really started to take a look at the kinds of building equivalent questions on what it would mean to go to a new building versus the existing building. I think we need to crack open that study and take a look at it again and re-familiarize this body of council members with that study, revise those options. I am concerned that we will consider making a decision before we've really seen how the dust settles with COVID. What I think I'm seeing with a lot of employers is sort of this one-third, 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 where about a third of employees want to be in the office, usually with young kids. A third want to be, it's some mix of working from home and working from the office, and a third want to work from home primarily. In addition, there's the possibility of long-term remote employment and how many employers are going to consider allowing people to move quite a bit further away, you know? You can get a heck of a house in Ellensburg for a lot less money than you pay in Issaquah if you can work from Ellensburg or points further away. So, you know, first and foremost, we have to look at the financials. I think that whenever I talk to folks from the administration, I think there's a presumption that we need to get out of City Hall Northwest as soon as possible. I totally get why it doesn't work as a customer interaction portal. It's not as obvious to me that we need to get out in terms of, if we had enough room for everybody in City Hall and City Hall Northwest before and we're letting people do some more working from home, it's not obvious to me that we couldn't solve this problem by moving the customer interactions, at least for now, to the existing City Hall and just have non-customer facing employees in City Hall Northwest. But all that will come out better if we reopen that facilities study that we looked at a few years ago. Look at the numbers as they fit currently and then reintroduce it to the four or five council members that haven't seen it before. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Martz. I was scribbling away there. Next up is Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. One, so I don't have concerns about moving out of the City Hall Northwest. I think one caveat is if we're moving the point of contact for people that would usually or would have previously gone there, you know, it was a source of confusion before that we had multiple City Halls, it will probably now become a source of confusion that that is no longer the place you go to get permits, you would go somewhere else. And so just, I think the messaging around that is important because we've already identified that that's probably a source of frustration for some people. I do think in the short term, making that change is, I think, is probably the right thing to do. I also plus one to revisiting the facilities study that was done. I think that was done towards the beginning of when I was on council and I think a lot of the information about the options in there would be good to revisit and to just consider again in light of the new work from home and new circumstances. One other thing I wanted to mention is that I think the services study that was done online, the survey that went out by a couple of different modes for getting customer satisfaction, it was really geared, in my opinion, towards the building permit people. And so if you look at the question around how would you prefer to access city services going forward, so 59% said in person, but then if you look at the comments, almost all of the comments say online or email because that wasn't actually an option. And so I think it probably really depends on what the people were doing, you know, for pet license or other day-to-day interactions. I think there probably are ways to facilitate those virtually. I think the last year and being, you know, so many people working virtually and having to do so many different things virtually has really shown us that we can provide a lot of services virtually. People are getting more used to that. And so I think, I think being a little careful about interpretation of that study would be good because I think for a lot of people, there are a lot of services that they can probably get used to getting online. And then also that, that I think from a, from the community's perspective, people that are homebound, people that have mobility issues, the ADA conversation that we had earlier, if there's a virtual way to access some of these services and that's the preferred way, then having that as an option would be, would make it more convenient for some folks to be able to access those services. So I do think a lot of people indicated that they would like to get services by email electronically. They had to actually type that in into the comments. And so I just, I think we can move in that direction. I think that's probably the way of the future for a lot of, for a lot of these things. And then I think the long-term, I think we have to sort of see, as people have said and as we talked about in the first conversation, I think there's still a lot of, a lot of things that are evolving as far as what does the future of work look like. So I would definitely watch those things with, watch those trends with interest and it's hard to make a decision on that at this point. And I don't think we have to make a decision on that, but for the short-term plan, I think it sounds like reasonable, a reasonable plan.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. We'll move on to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. In general, I would say I support the idea of the Stage One reopening idea. I am comfortable with moving public-facing services to one location and having that be at the City Hall. I think staff will come up with a way to handle the problems that have been addressed here. So I'm comfortable with that as a concept. But as far as the employee portion of the information that we received, I don't think that survey was very effective. The survey that went out to the employees included people who are in, you know, parks and maintenance and the police department, lots of people who aren't able to work from home. And so I have a really hard time looking at that information that says, you know, the 59% or whatever that wanted to, I forget what the data points are, I shouldn't state something out of mind, but it's some percentage that wanted to continue to work from home versus some percentage that wanted to come back. I have a really hard time looking at that information and really getting a sense for those employees who would have the option to continue to work from home, what their preferences were. I also, on that long-term idea, I have a really hard time thinking about financially supporting dedicated desks or offices for employees that are going to be empty three or four days a week. That to me doesn't seem like a good use of taxpayer dollars. If we are going to give people the opportunity to work from home three or four days a week, then I don't, as much as yes, I would appreciate having a, my own desk to come back to, I'm not sure it makes fiscal sense. So I would have more questions and need more specific data before going into that standpoint. I would also plus one, Councilmember Martz's concept of re-looking at the facility plan and wanting to know what the financial ramifications could be from looking at leasing temporarily compared to what our maintenance costs are. And also in that plan, if the idea is to surplus the building, what we would be looking at there as far as timelines and our ability to recoup some of that money. So, thanks.
Thank you. And moving on to Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is Chris Ray. First, Brian, thank you for the update on the senior center, so I don't even have to ask my question. I was preemptively answered, so I appreciate that. As to the main body of work today relative to City Hall Northwest and onsite permitting, I'm okay with getting out of City Hall Northwest. It seems like it's been a building in rapid decline as long as I can remember. And so I think that makes sense. I also support the idea of virtual services. I think delivering services in a virtual manner, this is not something that I've come to post-COVID, but it has been something that has become inherently apparent as a result of COVID. And the same for remote work. I have always been a big fan and advocate for remote work. And I think that's something we should support. Along with Councilmember Walsh, I understand that it would be really cool to have a workstation and be there a couple of days a week and work from home, but I don't think that is good use of city space and/or taxpayers' dollars. And with that, I am looking forward to, you know, I think these are, these are good stopgap measures, but I'm really looking forward to a comprehensive plan that talks about where we're going with facilities and in, and doing that in a staged manner so we can start to execute on some of those things with a view towards a long-term vision of what we think our facilities are going to look like in 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President Ray. Just real quick, I want to check in. Councilmember DeMichele, did you have any comments?
No, thank you. I haven't heard anything that I disagree with tonight, so no thanks.
Thank you. That's kind of how I'm feeling too. I haven't heard anything I disagree with. So are there any, last call for any additional comments from council members before I quickly summarize kind of what I've heard? All right, then in terms of a summary, the direction needed was with regard to this Phase One, if council's okay not returning to City Hall Northwest and moving the permit counter, and then reopening in July with limited hours for in-person services and encouraging appointments. I think I heard a consensus that everyone was okay moving customer-facing services to City Hall from City Hall Northwest. So I heard comfort there from the city council. There was a desire to ensure there's enough parking for employees and customers though, and ensuring that that's not causing more harm to the community via traffic or any other issues, prioritizing visitors and customers who come to other issues, prioritizing visitors and customers who come to City Hall, a desire to keep, oh, actually, that was Andrea's comment, a desire to keep in mind what if step one doesn't work out, you know, what's the plan B if step one doesn't work out? So getting additional information from the administration would be interesting about that. I heard from a number of council members that we'd like to revisit this former city facilities study that could help inform some of our conversations about Phase Two in May, ensure that we're communicating closely with folks that utilize in-person services so they know that we're moving. Keep in mind that even though we have these survey results that many people value online and virtual services and helps improve accessibility, so just keeping that in mind. Those are kind of the big things. And then just to put on the record, because I thought it was an interesting one too, kind of a midterm concern, but are we creating additional traffic issue by consolidating in that area? Wanted to make sure to repeat that one. Any particular comments that people felt I missed in that? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Goodman, you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you. You can finish up, though. I think it's not exactly, it is related to this, but I can ask when you're done. Thanks.
That was my full list. So all you, Councilmember Goodman.
All right. Councilmember Goodman here. So maybe it's dumb, maybe it's an obvious question with an obvious answer that we probably all know the answer to, but just because we're talking about facilities and employees and customer interface and working, I'm, again, I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure, when is the council and other committees returning to in-person? Stay, is that the Phase Four? And probably don't have a date, but I just want to make sure as long as we're talking about facilities and people and working and all of that. Thanks.
Yeah, City Administrator Bob Quitz, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Councilmember Goodman, members of the council, we're thinking about the options. Some of you may know this, Quaskill District has already begun a hybrid process where they're meeting, they have limitations on the people they can have in the room, they also are using video conferencing. So we are working with our IT staff to make sure that the council chambers is ready for a hybrid model of recognizing the council has not talked about this and we would not implement something without coming to you, but we want to make sure that the technology is there. In talking with other cities, I'm unaware of any other community in King County that has any kind of timeframe to come back. I think everyone's looking at everyone else at this point, waiting to see what would happen. The other thing that I think that is driving from the administration's perspective is current business before the council, that as we look at it, the business that you have before you can, can be conducted efficiently this way. There are really, there's really only one issue that is on the docket moving forward in the near term that I think would have members of the community wanting to come and speak to the council, and that is land use permits regarding the Providence Point School issue, and we are still working on the dates of that. So once we have a better idea of when those firm dates will be, we'll kind of compare that to where we are with the, of the current conditions. And if it looks as if a in-person meetings would make sense for that, you know, we'll then come back to the council with plenty of notice to talk about those issues. So it's, it's a little bit up in the air, but we are wanting to make sure first and foremost that the facility, the council chambers would be ready for some sort of hybrid because I think our best guess is that we'll be in a hybrid mode for some time once the council returns to the chamber.
Great. Thank you. So I didn't know the answer, so I'm glad I asked it. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked it too. Oh, a comment from Council President Hunt. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Thank you, Councilmember Hall, for summarizing the comments. I wanted to, plus one and also just mention for the summary, there were a few comments made about embracing the remote work and also being flexible to not having dedicated office space in the name of fiscal responsibility and sort of space planning, being open to, to having a more flexible work environment. So just wanted to add that in because I think several people talked about that.
Yes, thank you very much for mentioning that. And City Administrator Val Quitz, is your comment in the chat from earlier, or did you want to comment on that in particular?
I, I'd just like the deputy city minister and I to have a, perhaps a last word because I think we just want to, you know, fill in a couple of gaps before we depart this evening. So if you could just let us have a moment before you leave this aisle.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we have one more comment and then we're happy to throw it to you. So Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here, sorry. So Council President Hunt, in her last comment, reminded me that there have been a lot of comments supporting the remote work and having virtual options. And I guess I want to give a shout out to people who, keep people in mind who don't prefer in, you know, the virtual meetings and the virtual, and, you know, being able to only remotely connect with folks. In my day job, it's very difficult to conduct business that way with governments, given what people are doing. Sometimes it's just frankly easier to sit down and talk to somebody about your plan, sit across the table from somebody, and although we may not be ready for the way we do done things exactly in the past, I am not in favor of just completely converting. And I know we haven't necessarily talked about that, but, you know, there are a lot of people who don't like the virtual-only model. So I just want to make sure we keep that in mind, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goodman. And I'll actually make another comment, too, that made me think of some pretty significant data that's coming out of the state's Department of Health Behavioral Health Strike Team with there being some pretty significant across the state behavioral health issues that are arising in our workforce because of isolation, because of working from home. So there are just some, you know, things to balance here and to think about. So I'm very excited to have that discussion. And if we have both things in mind, I'm sure we'll come up with a good policy to move forward. So if there aren't any more comments, I will pass it off to staff to wrap us up and let us know if you need any more direction from us.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I think both Andrea and I would like to kind of just wrap up with a couple of comments. First of all, thanks for all the feedback. You know, this is something that we have been really trying to be thoughtful about, but also trying to time this to current conditions. And so I think that's been one of the hardest parts is to know when, when is it appropriate to move forward? You know, I think 60 days ago, 90 days ago, we thought that the summer would make sense finally, despite the fact some organizations like King County said that last summer that they were going to wait a year. But we still don't know. And I think King County is on the precipice of going backwards. If it does that, I think that that throws all of these plans a little bit further up in the air. But, you know, we want to be responsible to the community, we want to be able to provide in-person services when it's safe, we want to be responsible to our staff so that we can provide in-service service, person services when it's safe. So thank you for the feedback and we're certainly going to keep you apprised of what we do. There's been a couple of comments, though I want to, I don't want to leave tonight without addressing. First is the idea of working remotely versus not working remotely. We've been very forthright with the staff that says we are not envisioning a remote workforce. First of all, we don't have a remote workforce. The majority of our employees already come to work every day, between our park staff, our maintenance staff, our police department. We already have many, many employees that have never stayed home to work. They have come to work every day and for that, we appreciate their good efforts. And we try to be sensitive as we have these discussions because they will be the first to remind you that they have come to work every day. So we're, we're not, we couldn't be 100% virtual. For those who have worked at home, we've also been very clear to them that we want to be a good employer, we want to be sensitive to their needs, but we are coming back to work. You may not be here five days a week, but we are coming back to work and there will be an expectation that people are here and we're working on what that would be. So residents who are looking for services, you will be able to have a conversation with someone when we are back. That person might not be here, the specific person you need every single day, we will make that as easy and as transparent as possible so that when you do need to see someone that they are here. But I want to make sure that we leave tonight with a very clear statement, first and foremost, that we've always been here, that we've had, over half of our workforce has come in every single day through the pandemic and has served this community. And as we bring back those who are office-based, who have been working at home, there will always be a mix of folks that will always be here. The second point I want to raise is this idea of some of the survey comments, and one of them was people's preference to keep their own space. Of course, it's everyone's preference because it's easier, it's simpler, but the practical reality is, is that we cannot merge the two buildings in any way, shape, or form without telling individuals that you're not going to, many people will not have their same space. Certainly, there will be some, but not everyone. And so we're making that very clear. We appreciate hearing people's preference, but the, the reality is we have to have one place that people come to for customer service in the the pandemic, the number one question I heard at the public counter was, what do you mean this isn't where I'm supposed to go? This, this, it says City Hall on the door, what do you mean I'm at the wrong City Hall? So I think that to be able to address that problem head-on is really important. And if that means some individuals will not have a dedicated cubicle to come to one or two days a week, then we'll work through that. And then lastly, Andrea, I'd like you to just talk about the previous space planning work that we've done and how that's informed the work we've done thus far, and plus add anything else that you'd like as we wrap up.
Thank you, Wally. So yes, absolutely, the work that we're doing now is informed by the 2019 study that we've performed. That study and materials related to that study were linked in the memo in the packet for this evening. And we can, in the next meeting, when we come back to council in May, can review some of the findings from that study as